I'm not around, have you found? I'm always on your mind. And when you hear my name, does it sound the same as you felt when you heard it last time? Do you see flowers in my hair that aren't really there? Do you feel the pain when I'm blue? And when you see me, does it seem to be that blues changed to life in bloom? Because this is how I see you. And these are the things you do. You may not know, so I'm telling you so, the best way I know how to.
Welcome everyone to the Boiling Point Podcast. This is our coverage of the Northern York School Board meeting. For anybody who's tuning in, we will not be speaking during the meeting so that you can hear it. So feel free to turn the volume up. Once the meeting is over, we will be doing some post-game with Julia. So make sure you stay tuned for that. And I believe that they are beginning, so I'm going to hop out and let the meeting continue.
Good evening everyone. We start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, everyone. It's March 18th, 2025, and March 25th, 2025. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
And approval of the agenda as presented? Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend tonight's agenda. Our coach reservations under personnel under letter J. And those coaches are not in season, so there's nothing to resign from. So that I really shouldn't be on the agenda tonight. So that's the motion to remove that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? From now to then, yes. Alright, approval of agenda with amendment as presented.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we'll start with our recognition of the public. First public comment period is for comments related to items on the agenda only. We have your names, so you don't need to give that. But, uh, public comment is limited to residents of the school district. Citizens' comments or questions are welcome with a limit of five minutes per pro second. Questions and comments concerning individual staff members, students, or your own children's problems will not be addressed at the public meeting. Your comments will be given consideration by the board. However, the board may choose to not provide a response on your issue this evening. In that, we'll start with Sue Rizzo.
Hi, I'm Sue Rizzo. Um, I just wanted to, um, talk a little bit about policy 353 tonight. That's the policy about, uh, restrooms and who's allowed to use them and who's not with regards to transgender identity. We've been down this road before, so I know we discussed this, um, a year ago or so. And, um, now I hear that it's back on the agenda. And last week, uh, when I was here, the discussion was about how this was the ILC policy. I noticed that our stock and leader solicitor is changing names, but are they s- I think they're still our solicitors, right? Those are, um, the people that we pay, the taxpayers, pay money to the school and the school pays these people to work for the good of the people who live in this district. Uh, they watch out for us so that we don't, um, make unnecessary steps that would put us at risk for lawsuits down the road. The ILC, um, makes a lot of people in this district happy, a lot of people in this room happy because they have conservative views like most of the people here in Dillsburg. So when we listen to them, they're telling us the things that we want to hear. We went out of our way to bring them into our district so that we could listen to their advice, which is already what we wanted to hear. So I wanted to just suggest that since we have a neutral solicitor who's looking out for the best of us in SNL and a conservative solicitor who's working for free for us to tell us what we want to hear about conservative issues, that we also put an ear towards a more liberal, um, group in the state of Pennsylvania called the Education Law Center. I had the opportunity to end a webinar on Friday where they talked about transgender issues, especially about the bathroom policies, um, and the executive order Pennsylvania law and how the court cases play into, um, policies and avoiding getting sued by other people. And I would think that we would really want to pay attention to what a group like the ELC is saying because they're the ones that are going to come back and cause trouble for us in the future. They're the ones that are going to bring the lawsuits. It's not the ILC who agrees with us. It's the people who say, "We have to follow the law." And the people who interpret the law by the court cases and the people who interpret the law by Pennsylvania law and who are not just looking at recent executive orders which aren't law. Um, I did send an email out to Mr. Shulley. He, um, was kind enough to add me to his parent advisory group. And he suggested that I forward it to the rest of the board members. Take a look at those slides because those are the things you're going to want to protect us against. Against people who are interpreting the law based on the cases and the Pennsylvania law. I would also like to hear today, um, as you're discussing the policy, what was the advice from stock and leader? Because at the committee meeting, you only talked about the ILC advice. And before I go, I also wanted to ask a question about the middle school project. I'm not really invested in this, but I've been to a lot of board meetings recently. And it is a concern of mine that we're wasting taxpayer dollars in this process. I know you're discussing it today and you're looking into the future. But I would think that it's important that each of you understands the dollar amounts of the money that has been wasted, um, so far on the middle school project. I've heard numbers like two million, I've heard three million, some people are saying four billion. And I think that, um, maybe everybody in the room has a bit of a different understanding on how much money we spent to, um, do the studies, for the designs and the research. So I think the public needs to know, um, what those numbers are. And I would ask that we have them broken down and totaled up so that we can see how much waste that process was. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dionne Kapp, Carroll Township. During the March School Board meeting at Wellsville Elementary, a five to four majority vote, this board rejected the construction bids for the middle school project. At last week's committee meeting, the consequence of this decision followed suit as district administration presented each member of the board with a copy of a list of deferred maintenance needs for the current middle school building. I forgot to bring that up with me, sorry. I have a copy. Uh, you defer maintenance in the short term when you know how, when you know that a comprehensive solution is coming just a little bit further down the road. That is why teachers and students in this district were asked to hang in there and put up with the growing list of cosmetic and systemic flaws of an ancient building. After six years of waiting, however, a five to four majority vote of this board has asked them to wait an additional four, maybe even five years for a new or renovated building. But the list says otherwise. These items represent only the most problematic issues with the building, several of which must now be addressed to some degree concurrent with the restarting of the design process for whatever middle school project comes next. These are no longer deferred maintenance items because deferring them risks failure of critical components of the building itself. Speaking of that, middle school parents received a remind message today at 2:14 PM. FYI, the shiller is down and the parts needed are not readily available at the moment. It might be worn in the building tomorrow. This list is the price and the price tag that comes with it can now be called the cost of inaction. We don't know how much these items will cost the district in addition to rebooting the middle school project. Based on financial information I obtained through a separate rights and no request, however, we can identify some of the now sunk costs associated with the last three years. These two can be called the cost of inaction. When all is said and done, we will have paid Trader Group $2.5 million for architectural design work that was rejected. Add to that payments fully or proportionally related to the aborted middle school project to DEQUI, now CHA, KW Engineers, Earth Engineering Incorporated, Element Environmental Solutions, Integrity Mechanical, as well as other invoices paid for various local county, state inspections, permitting, and environmental-related fees amounting to $273,000. All told, the cost of inaction comes to over $2.77 million. But that is still not all. Most of these payments were likely made with construction bond funds, which means that the taxpayers of this district borrowed most of this $2.77 million for no benefit and we paid it back with interest. Right now, this cost of inaction is the current board's legacy. Your legacy may be salvaged by the reboot of this design phase. If a new enrollment study reveals that the Schrader design wasn't right-sized for our growing district, then we'll know that it was the wrong design all along. If the next and hopefully final design, be it renovation or new build, can, uh, can provide a learning environment of similar quality at a lower cost, then we'll know that your cost concerns were justified all along. We will be able to compare these figures down the road. I would love to stand here and challenge you to take these sunk costs and short-term critical repairs and find a way to recoup them through savings on the next attempt at a middle school project, but I hesitate. The mantra from some of the school board members has been, "We can do this for cheaper." None of the school business officials I have spoken to think a new building can be built for less than the construction bids that were rejected. One minute. Last week, Mr. Gunny mentioned that the company that he works for is already seeing tariff-related price increases on some construction materials. These data points tell me that we need to let the sunk cost of the Schrader design remain sunk. Trying to recoup them might move us away from aspiring to build cheaper and towards settling for building cheaply. That is a red line we must not cross. I will challenge the board to conduct themselves with the utmost integrity and transparency as the design process begins anew so that the two new board members who will join you later this year are confident in picking up where Mr. Kyle and Mr. Flackey leave off. I also challenge the board to work hard at fostering trust with each other, with the administration, and with the future design team so that when the time comes to put the next project out for bid, each of you, all nine, and everyone out here following the process, will advocate for this project and tell skeptics that our teachers and the children of our community are worth it. Thank you. Kevin Cummings.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Cummings. I'm in Franklin Township. I am a Franklin Township supervisor and I work for the US Army at Carlisle Barracks International Engineering Office. But my comments tonight are my own. These are just my personal beliefs. In regard to the middle school project, um, my background, I moved to Dillsburg in 2006 with my family. Uh, my three sons all graduated through Northern School District. When I lived in New York City, I was a union steamer in New York City for 20 years. I worked on building projects, everything from an elementary school, uh, two powerhouses, prison, 60-story buildings in Times Square, the World Trade Center for the bombing in 1993, at the Ground Zero in 2001. I am somewhat perplexed as to the vote to deny when a bid request went out and the bid came in under budget. As a fiduciary for the township and as fiduciaries for the school district, uh, we can't waste money. My role, again, I'm speaking on my own, not speaking from my role and where I work, but you know, I'm involved in construction projects for the US government and I have to look at every contract line I have. And I cannot understand why you would have incurred all these costs to put it out for bid. And when the bid was received, and if it is a competent bidder and under budget, I'm perplexed as to why it was denied at that point. Not just as a township supervisor, but also when I lived in New York City, I was on the community board for terms. So I've been in both sides of the table as a citizen and as an elector appointed position. And I know it's not comfortable. It's not easy. So I respect each one of you here tonight. But I also know that there was votes that I took in the past that I wish I could have took back. And I'm lo- I'm used to local government, not too familiar with the ins and outs of how you receive here at the school board. But I would ask that you would reconsider putting this to a vote again because you cannot build a building for the price that you cannot build a brand-new building for the renovation cost. I've seen three different sites where for the Carlisle area's school district, middle school that was proposed for seventh and eighth grade is not 58 to 68 million. The estimated cost are 88 to 94 million dollars. I'm concerned that you will exceed our debt capacity. And that not only will taxes be raised, you're in jeopardy if you exceed that with the state government might take over and disband the school. I know everything costs. I'm very familiar with construction projects. There might be people here with construction backgrounds, but I've seen some major construction projects. I know what it takes. I know it's not easy. I know you have to have the money from somewhere. But I cannot believe that the money was spent from inception to this past vote. Uh, I would just ask that you reconsider. I know that the timeframe is already moved. It would have been nice to break ground soon, start putting soap socks out, whatever you got to do. That ship may have sailed. But one of the hardest things it is to do as an official is to admit that you may have stayed. So I would just ask that you all please respectfully consider to take another vote. respectfully consider to take another vote, if not tonight, sometime in the very near future. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. All right, and with that, we'll get into our reports and Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Good evening. Tonight, we welcome back one of our own, the Honorable Mark Anderson, who was elected in November 2024 to be a House Representative for the 92nd District. Not surprisingly, among the committees that Mark serves on is the Education Committee. Mark has a deep passion for education. He was in education for 27 years as a teacher and administrator. The last 20 of those years were here at Northern, at Northern High School, where he was a highly-regarded and much-loved teacher in our social studies department. So we're glad to have Mark with us tonight. And Mark currently lives where he has, in Carroll Township, in the district, with his wife Cindy, where they raised their two now adult children. So I invite Mark to come up and say a few words. And as he does, I want to present him, in case he doesn't have enough swag, not enough sweat, we're gonna give him a sweatshirt, a Polar Bear's sweatshirt as well. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, sir. You know, Mr. Kirkpatrick, my big problem is I don't have any Redland, Cedar Cliff, or Dover apparel. So, yeah, so my wardrobe is limited considering all of the purple and white that I have, but I do not campaign in Newbury Township, Fairview, or Dover with Northern apparel on. That's losing votes. So anyway, I just wanted to thank you first of all for inviting me. I appreciate it very much. Just have a couple of things to say. I am on the Education Committee. Obviously, I hope I don't have to introduce myself to most of you. It's really hard to get used to that honorable thing to which my family is still not so sure about, but Mr. A feels a lot better than the honorable, I can tell you that for sure. Just want to let you know, for me, I am here in a supportive role. So, you know, most of my life has been Northern, Northern, Northern. Now I'm in a supportive role with West Shore, Redland, Cedar Cliff, Dover, a little piece of Northeastern, but that's primarily my concern and my responsibility. I am on the Education Committee. Probably about 75% of my energy goes into the Education Committee. There's a lot of sportsmen in the room. I am on the Games and Fisheries Committee, which I never thought would be the most controversial committee, but here in the 92nd District, I've had more emails on whether we go back to Monday's start date for buck season or a Saturday's start date. But my primary, obviously, which I toward to recognize campaigning education would be my number-one issue when it is. That's where my bill just started. I just entered my first bill on teacher certification to make it more flexible for schools in general, and not to have four levels, but to go back to two levels with an overlap in middle school to help middle school administrators be more flexible with their teachers and to make teachers coming out of college more marketable when they come out. So a lot of my work right now is on teacher shortages. I'm fortunate in that I can express to my other members that, you know, teacher shortages aren't shortages everywhere. There's places that we have to target. So right now, I'm working on legislation to make those pathways easier to get more teachers certified, specifically those that have a background in some sort of professional area where they can be certified. So that's really what we're doing right now. Another big question is funding. The governor's budget was a 7.5% increase. That ain't happening. Guarantee it. It's just not a, it's not even a starter. But I am, we are looking at ways to put things on the table to negotiate, I think, education. We can use that, some leverage to help out our school districts to get those types of things that we want to get for local districts. I will tell you this, for the board leadership in the district, any grants that we want, I know Mr. Shewley works really hard on the turf field and we got grant money and we got people to help out with that. I am, I have letters already to sign off on grants. If it serves the best interest of the school district, the township, the local government, that is one of the things that I can do and we put a letter, my letter attached to it to try and move it to the top of the list if we can. So that is something that I'm available for. The other thing is, you guys need to tell me, if there's something, tell me what's going on. If you need something, call the office. We have an open-door policy at our office. You can walk in anytime. I might be out and about, but there's always people there that can help. And that's anybody. You don't have to agree with me, disagree with me, it doesn't matter what the subject is. Please let me know if you have something that you need or you see a problem. And in fact, Claire's here, I'm glad to see Claire. The reason that I got involved in this, most of you have heard this story, is because of kids. So I take ideas from anybody, anywhere where I can get them in order to help specifically as it relates to education. We're very transparent. Everything that I vote on, everything that I support is online. We put all the speeches online, we put all of our comments online, we're not trying to hide anything. So if you want to check that out, most of my comments online are about education, whether it's popular or unpopular, that's not something I'm interested in. So just want to let you know, I'm here to support you and it goes both ways. I would expect you guys advise me on things that you need or maybe I support legislation out there and say, "That's not good for the world." Then let me know that, okay? Or, "Hey, we need you to support this." So there are a lot of emails, I get emails asking for support and asking for no votes, literally hundreds of them. They come from some group that's kind of managing or who is kind of controlling it or just sending mass emails. I believe them. If something comes from the school board member, I get something from Mr. Weir, I'm gonna open it up, I'm gonna read it myself, and I'm gonna respond myself. So I'm asking you to personally reach out if you need anything. Thank you, guys. I am gonna leave some things in the back. If you have neighbors, friends, whatever, I'll leave them out of the table. These are services that we do, that we can provide for not just members of the school district, but parents, kids, those things. I'll leave those back. Thank you, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'd also like to turn over some of my time to Dr. Meakin, who has been working with Mr. Miller on developing a board appeal process related to the library materials. I wanted to share a couple of things related to that.
Thanks, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Mr. Miller, I just wanted to follow up on last week's meeting where we said that we brought the date to the board. So Mr. Miller and I spoke to discuss board-level appeals of the library reconsideration process, which is the administrative guideline 109-3. We've made some progress. We spent time reviewing, actually reviewing, one of the submitted forms and discussed how some areas are straightforward and some areas are a little trickier. And the next step would be that we're gonna meet with the principals and gain more insights into how they are navigating the process themselves. And we believe that this will help inform the board appeal approach. So again, I feel like, or we both feel that we made some progress this week and will continue to keep the board updated. We think it's important to get it right, so we're not in a rush, but we do want to work as quickly as possible to shore up what the board-level appeal process is gonna look like. Did you want to add anything, Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I mean, you pretty much had it.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
You're welcome. And then, if there are any questions on that, then I just wanted to also alert the board that at your seats this evening, you found a couple of materials, updated materials for your board manuals, including contact information, but also committee assignments. We were able to update that because its board larray agreed to serve on the Polar Bear Foundation as the board rep there. So you can take those materials with you. Thank you. And that's my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Student Li Aizong, Ms. Claire Hubbard.
Hello. In the high school, we just started the fourth and last marking period, so we're all excited to wrap up here. Before that, though, we're focusing on testing in these final months of school and we have prom on May 17th. Nick Keelholdt advanced to All-State Chorus and ranked among the top 10 in vocals statewide. In sports, there was a track invitational on NHS this Saturday and Josh Stricka made a neat record, stadium record, and school record in the Discus Throw with 197 feet and nine inches. The track teams right now are both 5-0. Lacrosse, boys volleyball, boys tennis, softball, and baseball are also in season. In club news, Minicon surpassed their goal and totaled $30,851.86 for the kids to support childhood cancer. And Student Council hosted their annual Easter egg hunt for children of employees of the district. And I was there, it was a lot of fun, and we were visited by Lizzie, our school mascot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Discipline CIA, Mr. Shewley?
Report meeting next week.
Okay. Couple of Perry, April 28th. And then Polar Bear Foundation, all the papers meeting. Oh, okay. All right, perfect. So we'll get that update next month. And Business Manager's Report, Mr. Jyuk.
Mr. President, I ask the following checks to be approved for payment. General Fund paycheck stated from March 1st, 2025, to March 31st, 2025, for check 340804, check 340817, check 34819, check 340854, check 340856, check 340905, check 340907, check 340952, and check 350957, check 341012, in the amount of $1,675,818.21. General Fund payroll checks dated March 14th, 2025, for check 340855, in the amount of $197.12. Checks dated March 28th, 2025, for check 340953, check 340956, in the amount of $3,618.26. 2023 construction fund checks dated March 1st, 2025, to March 31st, 2025, for check 1087, check 1093, in the amount of $1,302,010.39. Free service account checks dated March 10th, 2025, for check 9330, to check 9341, in the amount of $140,679.11. Student activity account checks dated March 1st, 2025, to March 31st, 2025, for check 1107, check 1112, in the amount of $2,164.14.
Mr. President, I move to pay those bills.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I ask the following checks to be approved for payment. General Fund check 340818 dated March 7th, 2025, in the amount of $528.32, and check 340906 dated on March 21st, 2025, in the amount of $1,774.8, movement paid by H&amp;H Service Company Incorporated.
Mr. President, I move to pay those bills.
Any discussion?
All abstained from voting. Each main service company is owned by a family member of mine.
Pardon? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I ask for acceptance of the April 2025 Treasurer's Report. Is that moved?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And Mr. President, include the back of the reports, embarrassing characters.
Thank you, Mr. Jyuk. Mr. Becker is out. He had eye surgery yesterday and still has a patch on it. So, Mr. Flackey, can you?
Yeah, Mr. President, I move to approve by consent. Curriculum Committee report, letters A and B.
Sir? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Athletics and activities, Mr. Shewley?
Mr. Kyle, I move to approve by consent. Letter A, I didn't want it to.
Sir? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Budget and finance, Mr. Rudy?
Mr. President, I move to approve by consent. Items A and B under budget financing.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Building and grounds, Mr. Gunny?
Mr. President, I move to approve by consent by A, building grounds report.
Sir? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Policy, Mr. Miller?
Mr. President, I move to approve by consent by A.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And personnel, Ms. Whorlem.
Mr. President, I move to approve by consent by items A through I.
Sir? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And we're back.
Mr. President, I would move to appoint Saxon and Stump as the district solicitor due to the current solicitor stock leader 20 minutes from now for the period of April 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2025, as reported with engagement letter dated March 17th, 2025.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I would move to adopt the 2025-2026 proposal budget. Tentatively set taxes to be levied as follows. Real estate tax mill rate 20.3350 per cabinet tax imposed under section 679, zero dollars. Per cabinet tax imposed under Act 511, zero dollars. Enactment of the 1.25% current income tax at the collection rate of 1.75%. Reenactment of the 1% yearly transfer tax at the collection rate of 1.5%. Reenactment of the amusement tax rate at 10% shared with municipality. And that these taxes be tentatively adopted to finance the 2025-2026 budget, which calls for proposed expenditures in the amount of $74,77,440 and proposed revenues in the amount of $70,528,817.
Sir? Any discussion? Not everybody understands the difference between last year's mileage rate and this year's, this year's mileage rate, but it's a 1% increase. And with that, we have more calls.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunny?
Yes.
Mr. Weir?
Yes.
Mr. Flack?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Lily?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the physician services agreement with OSS Orthopedical Hospital LLC for physician support services at athletic events.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the agreement with Therabildies Incorporated for occupational and physical therapy for the 2025-2026 quarter.
Negative. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. And with that, end of the business and over the middle school project discussion.
Very good. It's not typical that we have discussions in a regular board meeting, but we want to try to keep the ball moving as much as possible as we think about the middle school and what we're doing there. So we're gonna pick up on both of our discussion items from last week. And I'm sorry, I should have waited just one second for Miss Morgan to get it up. No, not a problem. You're doing a great job keeping up. There we go. So as you see on the title slide there, just the first topic, our implications of the contracts not being awarded. And the second topic, we'd like to go a little further with the analysis and prioritization of the maintenance concerns for the Northern Middle School. And as we saw last week, there
And as we saw last week, uh, there are those issues listed there. Uh, we did add, based on our discussion, the last bullet item, the trader contract termination. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to Jason just to touch base with, uh, any progress we've made in any of those.
So the design team has had two meetings, um, one the end of last week and one today on the land development plan, uh, conservation district, uh, NPDS and also the occupancy, um, permit, highway occupancy permit. I've also reached out to the township. We will be having a communication, a sit-down meeting with the township. Uh, hopefully the beginning of May to discuss how to move for both the land development and the occupancy permit. There was an initial request that we withdraw the entire land development plan and then reapply through conversations with our solicitor as well as K and W. Uh, we believe a modification, uh, would be easier for us. So again, we need to have that conversation with the township. Uh, in regard to the NPDS permit, that's the conservation district, uh, permit. We'll have to have the communication with that entity. Uh, K and W is gonna lead that charge to, again, determine if it's a major or a minor modification of our NPDS permit, uh, with the conservation district. That's mainly around water, um, and, um, and whatnot. And then in terms of the traffic study, uh, again, that is part of the land development plan. We did do a full traffic study, but since we're not really making any changes to our traffic patterns, uh, right now, doesn't make much sense to move forward with what they had, um, asked us to do, at least that's our opinion. The township obviously could say, oh, you need to move forward with the million dollar improvements to the road. Um, and that isn't their discretion. So we are, uh, gonna request that we do another traffic study, given existing traffic patterns, not with the upgrades. That is a whole new study with all new costs. And then we'll use that data to hopefully work with the township. And have an agreement on what we need to do now, considering we don't have any plans for what we're gonna be doing for a middle school. So, um, there will be more plans with all of that, or, I'm sorry, more costs with all of that. Obviously, K and W, uh, is gonna be working with NPDS as well as helping us work through the land development plan. Uh, once we have a better idea of what the scope of that work is, they'll come back to, to me with estimates for their services. Um, and then Stockton Leader obviously is gonna be involved again in redrafting the land development plan that they had done originally with the township. Um, I was given a number of about fifteen thousand just for the Stockton Leader piece at this point, because that will be going back to the township. Supervisors for them to review, discuss and re-approve whatever we're gonna be doing, modification or, you know, withdrawal and resubmital. And again, like I said, we're gonna try to have our, our first sit-down meeting with the township in early May after we're able to have some clarity on what a traffic study would look like, the timing it would take to do another traffic study. And also the NPDS permit, how long, uh, it will take to hopefully have a minor modification, uh, of that. So a lot of work to be done to, um, change where we're at.
Is that other timelines on all of this? Um, what would, what would be the opposition to, uh, staying with them over here for a couple of months until we see what that space is? Does it ever need to jump into this?
We have, we have, we have a time limit on occupancy permit. There, in that agreement, there's certain, um, timelines that we have to hit for that. Uh, and the land development agreement is tied to the elementary school, so there was discussion today that potentially we could have an occupancy issue if we don't get all of that cleaned up. I don't agree, I mean, we have enough to deal with right now, I'm not interested in delaying anything with this, we have to clean this up.
When you refer to occupancy, you're talking highway occupancy, not.
No, they're building occupancy.
Okay, so I don't see that up on there, could you talk a little bit more about building occupancy?
I, I don't know anything, other than it came up briefly today, um, CHA brought that up in our discussion. They were just concerned, uh, of course, we're not gonna have full occupancy till the end of this calendar year, it's, you know, that Northern Elementary School is not gonna be completed until December. Uh, so we have plenty of time, hopefully, plenty of time right now, assuming we can work with the township, so it shouldn't be an issue. But if we delay, I may get into the details of what that means.
Other questions on those implications? Of course, Mr. Young meant Saxon and Stump when he said Stockton.
Sorry.
Old habits die hard.
They're gonna die real hard.
Yeah. Okay, then I'm gonna move on to issue number two. And that is, um, maintenance concerns and next steps.
Sure. So I needed an extra second to get my thoughts together. As far as like the occ, with, um, just with the occupancy with the school, does that have anything to do with the enrollment study? Is there enrollment study out of need? Do we have to do a new enrollment study for that?
The administration is seeking the board's direction on next steps to address concerns with the existing Northern Middle School building. Last Tuesday, uh, we provided the board with a general, a general listing of the Northern Middle School maintenance concerns and were directed to prioritize them. The admin team reconvened this week to debrief and plan accordingly. Uh, in order to get a better sense of the scope and depth of Northern Middle School's system issues, we are bringing in contractors and vendors to assess various systems. You can see there listed, um, taken from our list from last week, those systems that we're requesting be assessed by contractors and vendors. Building envelope, electrical systems, plumbing systems, HVAC systems and the kitchen.
Maybe when, when these contractors are going in.
Can you eliminate that? I know Matt's reaching out at this point, trying to make some arrangements.
Maybe we've contacted people already.
Uh, Matt has contacted some of them, um, with the issues we're having with the chiller right now. We're parlaying, uh, train coming in to look at that. With the whole evaluation of the HVAC systems and with the chiller, there's pumps and, and other issues there that, that he's asking them to, uh, take a look at. I don't know how much he's reached out for the other items yet.
Okay. All right. Next slide. So the options then for prioritizing, um, items in that list. Tapping into the expertise of these contractors and vendors will start us down the path toward prioritizing the concerns. However, these assessments in isolation will not provide a complete picture of Northern Middle School's needs. We would still need to understand the complexity and interconnectedness of these systems with, with one another. Now, we feel that there are two options for analyzing and prioritizing Northern Middle School's building needs, and they're listed there. The first one is the in-house option. And the admin would do our best, uh, to, uh, using internal resources such as the existing feasibility studies and input from the contractor and vendor assessments and things along those lines, uh, to prioritize those options or those items. Or to out, to outsource. Uh, outsourcing would look something like contracting with an engineering firm. Uh, it could be CHA, we've used up to this point, or otherwise, if we wanted to go this route, to do a comprehensive review of the identified concerns and provide recommendations for prioritization and resolution. So in considering these two options, in-house and outsource, uh, keeping it in-house will obviously save the cost of contracting with a firm, but the depth of the problems and the cost of the repairs would be less certain. Um, alternately, outsourcing with a firm will have a cost for their services, but their analysis and recommendations would be more in-depth and informed. So, wanted to get the board's direction, uh, on that. Uh, hopefully, uh, a takeaway that we can move forward with one way or the other, if, uh, if we get there in this discussion. So with that, I just turn it over for any questions or discussion important to have on that.
Just a quick question, is it possible to have a mixture of both where in-house addresses some concerns, but things maybe don't exist? Like this is not their expertise we contract with.
I would take up, I'm gonna look at you, Jason, on, on that.
Yes, uh, there could be, I mean, we could start with the in-house piece and, and for the items that are more in-depth, more detailed, um, you know, bring in, uh, a firm for that, for that part. I think the, the issue is we're not talking about, um, I, I think the easiest analogy here is the tech analogy that we use a lot. But we're not talking about, you know, the screens that we're putting in the classrooms, we're talking about everything that gets the data from C M R I T guy, IDF, I don't know, from wherever the heck it's stored to the TV, right? Like the wifi connectivity, you know, those lines, that data line. And so we're not talking about the toilet sitting on the floor, we're talking about the lines. We're not talking about the one electrical outlet that's not working, we're talking about the lines, you know? So that analogy helps you understand more of the depth that we're talking about here, and it's not just replacing a faucet. It's not, and we need to do that, but there's, there's depth to that in some of these areas. Um, and that's the, that's what we need to be aware of.
So we're not saying use CHA to say, hey, replace that toilet, we're saying use them for major.
Correct. Correct.
The start to that process be to have a building grounds lineup, contractors communicate their quotes and assessments, and then based on their feedback, see if it's necessary to get to the next step and engage another firm.
I think that could be part of the first step. Um, in-house, in-house, we would have the skill and expertise to look at each item in isolation. The benefit of the outsourcing would be that they would look at the interconnectedness of the system to think that we might know it.
Larry, I guess it goes into a deeper conversation, are we probably fixing things to broke or are we probably trying to rehab a building? I mean, there's a lot of things in that list, those things, like, it has to be looked at immediately. So I guess it would be helpful to figure out of that list, you know? Jason says, is it a, is it a pool that's broken when it lists its bathroom? Or is the plumbing to the bathroom being replaced?
That's right.
I, I think, I think my opinion would be start the contract, get their opinion, that's, it's free advice. Figure out what, what it is from there.
My thought was to, just having more, I kind of talked about this a little bit last week, but I had a little bit more insight of this. Um, like you're saying, it could be a toilet or it could be the lines or something, but the list that was given, which I'm sure was just kind of like a peek and sort of things that are presented at this point. But I think that all of us probably would want to look at more of the detail as far as like what actually is the problem. Um, cause if it is a broken faucet, like even if we were doing a construction project, faucet should have been fixed. Um, that kind of stuff, like normal day-to-day things. Obviously with a construction project and having lines in the building and, you know, all of the things that were being addressed in a reconstruction project are not secondary, but I think side by side to this, parallel to all the things that are affecting the day-to-day of the teaching staff and the students to be able to go about their needs appropriately.
That's the capacity piece I was speaking to last week, I, I don't think we have the internal capacity to get to that depth and detail. We don't have the ma, manpower to do that. So we can get what we can get through item number one. Um, and if the board sees that and says we want more, then we'll have to come back and ask you to go forward with number two. But we don't have the capacity to do a engineered quality list that fully describes the inadequacies of the building.
Is any of that done with the engineer, with the architects and the engineering and with CHA? Is any of that stuff done with all the preliminary stuff with the rehab? Isn't any of that part of the study as far as what needs to be replaced anyway?
Uh, some of it's in the feasibility study, but it's not overly detailed, but we can use what's in the feasibility study. Assuming the board is gonna trust that information.
Does the administration have a recommendation of which one do you think is better or which one do you prefer?
I mean, we would prefer, um, expertise so that we're not, uh, at some point, uh, kind of on the carpet, if you will, for missing something that was not able to be seen because of the limited resources we might have in ability to do this. So that's our concern, if that's the board's direction, we'll do, we're gonna give it our best shot. But we need that to be understood, that, uh, there's gonna be some limitations in that option versus on a firm to, to do a more in-depth, um, study.
To that, to that, I would just say, I'm sorry, I'm, uh, I was just gonna say to that end, I mean, assuming we would be okay utilizing individuals and firms that were a part of that process, renovation process, I would say we would wanna first look to CHA and or Snyder Hoffman, who was the mechanical engineer, uh, cause they would already have a good knowledge of what that building is right now cause they didn't plan the renovation, but we don't have to go into that. That's fine. Um, I would say I believe it's a little bit of both, a little bit of both being that, um, we obviously have some needs, it sounds like, that are more critical, warm, safe, dry type of things. Uh, that we're certainly aware of internal to the district. Last month, it was talked about full feasibility, partial feasibility study, I think we landed on full feasibility study. So there's gonna be a team that gets selected by this administration, this board, uh, a yet undefined team. But I think in terms of, Mr. Young hit on it, building and trust piece, this Northern York County School District team is gonna select the outsiders that are gonna be worked with. And that is gonna be a team that we need to trust. And so I think the piece of that is building through that process, a little bit of a tag team of, we certainly know where our pinch points in the building are because we were able to come up with a list of needs pretty quickly. Things that have been deferred that we were looking to address over the next two, two and a half years through that renovation project. And, you know, working a little push-pull with that team with the new, let's call it feasibility study, cause that's what it would start with. That architect and that engineering team, if we need to dig in things further, we need to look at things, um, more expeditiously because the last bullet there, thorough analysis and recommendations. In my mind, whether we like it or not, the recommendations for that building of a more serious nature will be dependent on what comes out of the study for, I think, everybody's talked about a new building. What comes out of that? What's the budget for that? What's the feasibility, the potential to do that, you know, over here? Do we require any of that middle school remain? Will all of the middle school get removed? And so, you know, we also heard it about, uh, we need to be wise with finances. And so there's a piece of it too, which depend on what's gonna happen to that building, it's gonna depend on how, how much you need to do to it. So as an example, if it was to stay in full and we need a bridge to get people into now that building, we need to make sure we maintain that, it would be a wise investment.
If it would be deemed that that building is going away, then we need to keep it functional, we need to keep it safe. Maybe it's not a full rebuild. So, I think some of it, any, anybody who's outsourced for this would be a little bit hamstrung without having some of those, some of that feedback and specifically decisions made by, you know, board and administration as far as what the next steps in the, in the future middle school project is.
Yeah, just rather than, so, some comments have been made, raised comments. I just wanna, is there a sub-reating or consensus from the board? As far as how we, how we wanna proceed? I think what I heard John say was, we know internally what some of the issues are of course. So, we start there and then as things get more complex, we perhaps bring in or think about at that point, bringing in outside resources to help us address those things. That's what I thought I heard, but maybe you wanna clarify for me?
Basically that, but I would say is if the main thing that came out last meeting was a feasibility study, hopefully, that that team is selected and can be relied on for some bits of that outsourcing. So that we're not picking parallel teams to talk about how to maintain that building and whatever the future middle school building, whether that be renovation or new looks like. And I think there's a timing piece that makes sense to that as well. Is if we have a restroom that does not have a sink that works, we need to get a sink in there that works. And that's a, we, we know that right now. Let's get those items addressed immediately. And hopefully, the timing, or I should think that the timing, as we're understanding what we're out of depth for, that we've got the selected team involved, that everybody's buying into and supporting.
The, the other thing I would add to that is just as we move forward with the toilets and we're using that, is that we're coming back to that example. And there's types of items that need immediate attention. We do wanna pay special attention to the needs of our staff and students that are in the building. And we feel like there are some things we can do. Cosmetic is probably the wrong word, but there's some things we can do to make the building, not, not so much the functional piece, but the aesthetic, the, it's a, it's a place where they feel good about being in and so forth. You know, things like a coat of paint here or working on the entrance to the school and looking at some of those things as well. We'd like to spend a little more time this month talking about those things administratively, especially with Troy and the, the middle school team. But then coming back in May and spelling theirs out a little bit more, a little more detail as well.
Do you guys take any suggestions? Like, I know we don't know the in-depth, everything that we've been going over. But like, I know one of the things that was, was talked about was not having hot water in facts. And they make under a sink tankless hot water heaters. I was a machinist at one time in the department that we had. We had one in our department because we were required to sink. So, is that something that, like, would you guys take suggestions from us? Or do you not wanna hear, or do you not want those? Do you wanna have the in-house people handling that? Or what would be your thoughts on that administratively?
I mean, absolutely welcome suggestions. What you're, what you're hearing or what your expertise is, please, please share those things. That's gotta be considered in the grand scheme, of course. But yeah, we welcome any sorts of ideas you might have.
I would also add to this too. It is important for us to keep this moving forward. So, I don't want it to be, hey, I just said something and we think that's the right direction. I'd like to hear what everybody, let's, let's give clear direction of how we want the administration to proceed, so that we can keep it moving forward.
I know Steve hasn't asked us to do this, but I would, I have no problem asking the board, have they reflected on the vote last month? And has anybody thought about it, thought that they made the wrong decision? They would like a do-over. Mr. Cummings brought it up tonight. But we could certainly ask the administration to ask contractors whether they would hold their price for another fifteen or thirty days after looking at what all the ramifications are for the vote last month. I know Steve's not gonna ask us to do that, but I'm just gonna say as a board member, there is a lot of mess to clean up and there's a lot of money that we put into this. And so, for those who voted against it, is there unanimous consent to go back and look at a renovation? Or is everybody comfortable with, with moving forward and doing?
I'll move forward. I'm not, I voted and I'm not inclined to change my vote from last week.
Okay. I think this is your, this is your offering. Like, if you've had any, any second thoughts on it, like Mr. Cummings suggested, so. But my advice then would be, don't micromanage the administration. It's not our job to tell them how to fix a hot water heater or how to fix a broken toilet. We need to give them a goal and direction.
I don't think it's telling them how to fix it or anything. How long have they been broken? What, even though they were deferred with the construction plan in place or talked about in the plan? If these things have been broken for extended periods of time, which I have had parents tell me, that it's been years of stuff sitting there that needs to be done. It needs to be fixed.
They know that. They have to prioritize.
Then someone needs to do it.
I know that. We're not prioritizing. It's, it's not our role to do that.
Mr. Barry, any thoughts?
You won't like what I, what I have to say. I think we should still, I'm, I'm talking about the whole project. I think we should still do the renovation to the, to the school, but not to the extent that was proposed. There were two major things that I always heard people talking about. They always said it sounded, it was like a dungeon there, you know, not enough natural light into the building. Of course, the other thing was the, was the enrollment. They projected enrollment of two hundred and, we, two hundred fifty more students, whatever we were projecting for over the long term. My, my thought, my suggestion was, would be to not flip the school. That is the most expensive, or I'm sure that was the most expensive cost involved with that. We've already been given, given the, some ideas even during this, during the, the discussions that we had previously. They, remember, we had the two-story addition was suggested about, it would give us ten more classrooms. And the estimated cost at that time was between six and seven million dollars. And then, then we had the, the cost for, to enlarging windows. Now, obviously, it would be different regardless when, when you're doing, not during the, the total schooling that was proposed. But my suggestion would, would be to, to, to handle, to, make the, make the building brighter with those, with those enlarging windows, enlarges, and add the extra classrooms that we need and, and do whatever else is needed on the inside. My, I would say, let's get a budget and stick with it. My suggestion would be thirty-five million dollars, so about half of what, what was proposed. But we have thirty-five million dollars to spend, put that into renovating the school to the areas that are needed. Whether it's, whether it's the, you know, the, the more classrooms, which obviously are needed. Or the, the, the kitchen, you're, obviously, you're gonna need more other space that are cafeteria and, and, and then kitchen. But have a budget and then stick with it, not, not deviate from that. So, like I said, it would, it would not be, it not be the amount of renovations that we're talking about. But you can do a lot for thirty-five million dollars.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not married to an idea of a new school renovation. I'm looking to do the best thing for the district. I think we, I think it'd be in our best interest to bring in at least one or two of the architects and have a conversation, or a public conversation. We've been, we've been told at least six schools plus that were built for less money than our renovation costs. You know, some people say that's, that's mythical. You know, I believe the gentleman that gave us the list here several months ago, I, I think that was what actually works for the firm that was involved in building these schools. So, I think it would be valuable to, to get the opinion of, of this architect on this is what we're presented with. Can you do it more cost-effective as a renovation? Could you build us another school for the same money? When we were, when we gave the current architect, Schrader, those, asked those questions, we were giving back with, we were, I'm sorry, we were, we were responding back to it that they, they couldn't meet those numbers. So, then we're on task with either those numbers are not correct or we have an architect that's not capable of doing what other architects appear to be capable of doing. So, if the numbers that I, I have been talking around here over the last years are anywhere close to reality, I would wanna pursue that further before saying new school renovation, one way or the other. I just, I, I, I've said it all along, and I'll say again, I think we, we hired the, the Philadelphia version of architect to do a northern project. And I, I don't think that this project was looked at with our best interest in mind, cost, cost in mind and with the objective of staying within a budget.
I have a suggestion that maybe we'll do our solicitor and ask them, would be probable, the opportunity to have LeVar and ECI come in and talk to us. Our solicitor said it's not a conflict of interest for them to advise us on projects that are doing, maybe will be best for us. I think free advice might be, might be helpful to all of those, those projects they've done. So, that's something we could do about, no approval solicitor. I think that might be a good idea for us to hear from those people, because they are the two premier builders for schools in Central Pennsylvania. And they're, they're a local and I think they could do a lot for us.
I also proactively make the comment to head off the, the next, the comment at the next month's meeting. I personally have no affiliation with any of these people we're talking about. I'm getting no kickbacks. All I know is I have best interest in the district and it appears that, this, this predates me, but it appears, perhaps you were involved, served as well previously. I think it would make sense for those guys to come in and look at what, what we're presented with from Schrader, see if they agree with it, see if there's a way to, to make a more cost-effective project, project for us. And like I said previously, I'm, today, if I had to pick a decision of renovation versus a new school, I could be swigling with the others, it all comes down to numbers. I think either direction could be a good direction with the right support system.
In the meantime, while administration is prioritizing, are we okay, you know, leaving them all on their board, saying in-house for what they can? But if they feel they need to outsource, then go ahead and go with that?
I would add to that, keeping in mind, we used the bathroom example, that's broken toilet that was fixed yesterday. Re-plumbing the whole bathroom, because it might fail two years from now, is, is probably not something that we should pursue at this moment until we decide what the long-term features of that school.
Based on the RFP for feasibility, how long before this would go out or leave it go?
It'll go out probably in May. And then we would wanna do interviews after, you know, a period of time. We would allow them to respond. And so, then we bring in firms to interview. And then the board would eventually choose whichever firm you would wanna move forward with. So, we're talking a few months, seven months, January, July, probably. We'd usually leave them open four to six weeks.
I'm a little naive in the RFP process. Why will it take until May to have that represented in terms of already? Can you use a previous one and just update it to what we need now and put it out further than that?
If that would like, if the board would like that to be, be my priority over the middle school, over having these conversations, over my budget, over everything else I do in my job? If that's my priority for tomorrow, that's what I'll do tomorrow. That's not at the top of my list. I'm sorry. Don't anybody kid me.
Again, just clarification to give administration, this is the direction. When it comes to revoting and bringing the renovation back up, I just wanna say, Paul, are you yes or no?
I'm not just wanting to revote. I'm gonna point out having a conversation with another architect to make better informed decisions. But I'm not prepared to revote tonight, if that's a chance.
No, but I just, I guess future, be on the table for.
Explain the future, depending on what the, you know? I'm, I have all the pull on that aspect of getting some information from another architect.
Revoting all the Schraders, is it correct?
Correct.
We're gonna reconsider or refund it. It's worth asking, but since we're pretty set anyways, then we should expeditiously try and get it together.
Yeah, I'm just looking for the board to have give directions.
I mean, if, if it's going the route of an RFP, I just think we need to try to expedite as much as possible, because that's gonna become a wedge train that starts the wheels going everywhere we need to go. If that's where we're going, it sounds like that's where we're going. Then I would just set it up with as tight as is reasonable windows or show responses and things like that. That process, we would get that team selected, because it's, that's where we're going. That's, that's the start of the process and we gotta get that moving.
So, move forward with the RFP and see what develops in that process in terms of options.
So move forward with the RFP and see what develops in that process in terms of options. Move forward with the RFP, get the team selected through their process. We highlighted it as we have, but leverage that team, I think. If that's going to be your trusted team and moving forward, let's work with them again. I would say that that would be the priority because it really most depends on that. That's great.
What kind of time frame do you need?
So if we set the selection of the, uh, I can tell you before that you're four minutes. One, I wish for that. And that's, that's what I'm doing.
Is that doable, Jason, on your end?
Yep.
And then so between now and eventually four minutes, where the war can come on option A. We could allow expanding the rest of that to be, uh, maybe.
Okay, good luck.
Yep. Okay. I think that gives us what we need in terms of direction. Thank you. I don't think, any administration, anything else on that? Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, we've got recognition of the public. Any, any other cards, uh, any items for future agenda?
Yeah, Mr. President, next month we'll be voting on the, um, final approval of the bathroom policy. The question came up tonight, um, about, you know, who, what does ILC think about this versus what does Stock and Leader think about this? Stock and Leader certainly has suggested wait because federal guidelines are supposed to come out from a hundred and twenty days with the executive order, which is like thirty-five days from now. So at next month's meeting, I think it would be a good opportunity to have both sides of this presented. I certainly moved this forward because I wanted to, to, uh, have consent. But Stock and Leader wants to wait another month or so. So if we don't have any guidance and Pennsylvania law contradicts the executive order, I'll probably recommend tabling this for another month, next month. So don't be surprised if I do that. Um, just waiting, but I do think it would be helpful in a public meeting to talk about both ILC as well as Stock and Leader and the new name, just so everybody understands the positions. I mean, I'm hoping there's going to be federal guidelines that really clean this up because, you know, state law is at odds with the executive order. So somebody is right. I just don't know who.
Just clarification, Greg, you're asking for, um, a review of the positions of both firms?
It would be helpful, yeah. I know we got those as handouts two months ago, but since we're going to be voting on final approval, if something happens between now and next month, some, some additional guidelines. But, you know, we did have, you know, public asking us, what does our solicitor, what is their position? So I think it's important for us to be able to tell the public what the position of the solicitor is as well as what the administration's recommendation is.
So that you're viewed in last month's meeting, uh, we review the, uh, the guidance from the solicitors, for objects of, uh, the Ucasas.
Do you do that at the, at the meeting?
I, yeah, we, we did. We had, uh, Mr. Patrick presented the Stock and Leader's paper on Title Nine as well as Senate House Center's paper on Title Nine.
If that was the case, I apologize if I said that about that, but, um, that's fine. It would be helpful. If there's additional guidelines between now and next month that we can talk about this.
Anything else for, 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 for? We do have a short executive session afterwards, but in the meantime, uh, fair play.
Oh, sorry, and personnel, yeah.
I was, I was just, I'm sorry, I was just going to get the agenda to recognition of the public for, uh, contributed to knowledge and highlights. Were there, were there any knowledge and ideas?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't get any cards. I don't think this morning you didn't get any, did you? Okay, all right. Thank you very much. All right. And remain for Jordan and second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everybody. Um, sorry about that. They, um, ended a little abruptly. These, these meetings sometimes do end a little quickly and I'm not prepared for it. So, um, in just a few minutes, we will have Julia back on. Um, I do have my camera turned off for the night. For anybody who doesn't know, I am handicapped in a wheelchair. So sometimes late at night, once it reaches a certain time, I usually turn my camera off. And, um, and, you know, for safety reasons and stuff, you should always leave your camera covered at night. You shouldn't leave it open. So make sure you cover your camera. We'll use that as a nice, uh, safety message. Thank you for everybody who tuned in, um, and anybody who's still watching. We didn't get as many, uh, parents tuned in as last week, but that's okay. Um, hopefully it's still going to be up on our social media and on our channels for anybody who wants to re-watch it. And, uh, as I said, Julia should be joining me in just a few minutes to, uh, discuss some of the, uh, what just happened in the meeting here. They did discuss some building things and we got to hear from, uh, a Pennsylvania state representative. So, uh, I'm looking forward to talking to Julia more about that. If you're still watching, please leave a comment. How was the audio? Were you able to hear? Um, were you able to hear everybody? Um, it seems like the, uh, seems like the, um, the school board members are talking a little bit more directly into the microphone to make it easier to hear. So, uh, if they, if they tune in and watch these, I appreciate that. But if you're still watching, tell us, let us know how the audio was, or if you're watching on the re-watch, leave a comment. Let us know how the, uh, volume was. I am just, uh, checking, making sure Julia is coming into the studio. And we are working on ways to make these, um, watch-alongs easier and better and a little more interactive. Uh, but it takes time to implement some of these things that we're doing. So if you stick with us, they will continually get better. Uh, one of the things that I'm currently working on is a seating chart visual. So that way you might, that way you know who's speaking, or at the very least you know where everybody is seated. Okay, Julia is going to be coming back in, so she will be, uh, hopefully joining me here in just a moment or two. We can discuss exactly, uh, some more in-depth about what happened. I am also going to get the agenda up as a reference point for myself. If you're also watching, leave a comment. What are your thoughts on, um, the agenda only going up? Uh, two days before the actual meeting. What are your thoughts on that? Uh, do you, do you think there should be more time with the agenda meeting, uh, between the agenda meeting and the meeting? Or are you happy with the two days? Leave us a comment about that while we, uh, wait for Julia to get in. I'm personally of a mind, I think it should go a little faster. I would prefer if it was a little longer. But, you know, I'm not a parent, um, or even in the school district. So, you know, let's, let's hear from you. Okay, Julia, uh, is talking to, to, uh, some other people, which is important. Anybody who wants, uh, anybody who wants to get information is important. So, uh, yeah, she's going to definitely talk to those people and I will continue to vamp for at least a few more minutes uh, until, until she can arrive. Well, I haven't seen any comments come in, so if we're got some viewers, um, you know, please leave us a comment. Let us know, uh, what you feel about the agenda or our coverage, or if you, whether or not you've been able to hear the, uh, the school board members when they, uh, when they're talking. It seems like more of them are speaking into the microphone. All right, so it was State Representative Mark S. Anderson who, uh, spoke tonight. Um, I only got to hear a little bit of, uh, what he said. There was, uh, it seemed like at least on my feed, it was a little, there was a little bit of background noise from either somebody or something occasionally and it kept drowning out his audio. So I'm not sure if you experienced that also, so I didn't quite catch everything that he was saying. Um, honestly, it sounded more like he was running for office, but he did say that he was there for the schools and he has an open door policy. Uh, we're also, I'm going to reach out to him, see if we can, see if he'd like to come on an episode to talk about the schools and, and, uh, perhaps some other topics as well. Maybe, maybe we'll get lucky and get that. Uh, they also discussed some, uh, some committee meetings approved, some, uh, committee meetings, both building and budget. A couple of those, uh, things got approved. Didn't seem like there was any pushback on those or, or anything like that. The meeting itself seemed to go pretty, pretty smoothly this time. Didn't appear to me that there were any big bombshells to be dropped. Actually, now that I review the, uh, review the outline, I guess there was some pushback on the building, the middle school that needs, uh, either renovations or rebuilt. Um, that's going back to committee, it seems, and, uh, some people were happy about that. Other people were not. I guess since they had already went through the bid process, they're wondering why they didn't just go through with it. Uh, we'll talk to, well, ask Julia a little bit more follow-up about that. Oh, and I believe Julia is going to be making it in, so we're going to get her in the studio here and save my neck.
Sorry, I was, I was stopped by three different people on my way out, so.
That's okay. I know, I just, that's what I was telling any of the viewers who tuned in. I was like, if anybody needs information or whatever, you know, that's important. So I was like, I'll vamp for a while until, until Julia joins me. Uh, you know, I can talk about this stuff all day long and the politics of it, but without, you know, I think the parents, you know, having, under, knowing what they feel about it. I don't know how much value that what I say can really offer, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
So it seemed like the building in the, let's go, I want to start with the building committee. Seems like there was a little bit of issue with that. The middle school needs renovated. Is it renovated or rebuilt? Or is it just repairs?
I, here, here's the thing with the middle school. Like, I don't really have an opinion on what the right thing to do is. I know that the district can't afford to have it rebuilt. Um, but renovations, um, definitely need to be done.
And they're going, if I understand correctly, it's going back to committee now after they had already went through the bid process? Did I, do I, did I understand?
They're, they're starting from scratch. They're going to reach out to new, um, architects. From my understanding, some of the board members felt that the architects that they were using from Philadelphia were, well, to basically quote one of the board members from last week, they were a little too rich for our blood. And that they just, when they said, hey, we need to get it down below this amount, they said that they couldn't do it. But other architects that are local have done it for other districts for that amount. So, um, not having been to the meet, the special meetings that they had for the board and not really knowing what the budget is and didn't really look, I, I, I haven't looked deep enough into it to, to know what is the right thing to do. I can just tell you what I've been, I've heard board members say.
So I, I just want to, I just want to help understand people, uh, what happened in the meeting tonight. It's, it is, they did do the bid process. They had done it and now it's going to go back to committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so you don't know the specifics as to the why or anything, but that is what we witnessed in the meeting.
The old board members, um, this was a couple of years ago. Um, went through, got an architect. For some reason, they brought an architect in from Philadelphia. I don't know the reasoning for that. When there's local architects, I don't know the reason for that. Um, you, you, um, and when the new board came in, they decided to scrap it. Um, and try to do it for less money. And, and again, I don't have any of the details. I don't have any of the figures there. There's other members in the community and that could probably, they're a little bit more invested in it than I am. So they could probably explain it to you a lot more than I could.
Well, hopefully we're going to have one of the school board members on an episode here in the next, uh, week or two.
Yeah.
So I will, we will follow up, um, more with that. But the rest of the meeting seemed to go through, oh, oh, I'm sorry. I want to go back though, uh, Representative.
Mark.
Mark Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Uh, yes, I'm also going to reach out to him as well, see if he would like to come on an episode. I thought when he looked right at the camera for a moment, I thought he was going to wave at the camera and say hello. Uh, he did not. He, he resisted the urge. I saw it in his eyes. He wanted to do it. He, he was almost shocked by it. He was like, oh, I'm on camera. And then back to the meeting quickly. So, um, I can understand that. To me, I mean, I'm not gonna, I said this a little earlier, uh, he did say, he did offer his help to the schools, um, and he, he sits on a lot of committees. He can help with finances and budgets and all of this stuff, um, which is great. And I think that's great. And he said he has an open door policy, which I also think is great.
Yeah.
Some of his speech seemed a little bit like campaign speech to me, but, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a reporter, not a politician at the moment. So that's what I look for. I look for things like that. And, uh, you know, to me, it seemed like a little bit of like a campaign. But I guess, you know, as a politician, you campaign everywhere. I mean, I sell myself wherever I go, you know, I'm always talking about my show and promoting myself. So I'm sure that's exactly what he was doing. He was, he was likely doing the same exact thing. But I would like to get him on an episode and see how, where, how involved he is with what happens at the school level and, and get some information from him. So we'll reach out to him as well.
Former Northern teacher.
Okay, a former Northern teacher. I got you. So that's, that was, that was his connection there with, he was saying at the beginning about Northern and, but he has to go to other districts.
Yes. I think, I, I believe he said he taught here for twenty years. Um, and he was the head of the social studies department for the district and the kids loved him. The kids loved him. But, you know, they, it was actually his students that came to him, um, when, uh, when Don Kiefer announced that she was running for senate, um, and her seat was going to open up, it was his students that came to him and said, we think you would do a great job, uh, as our congressman. And he told them, he goes, well, if I become your congressman, I can't teach. And they said that they felt that he could do so much more on that level. So he decided to run and he won, so.
That's interesting. Well, then I'd really like to have him on an episode. So if you're tuning into this, uh, Representative, I'd love to have you on an episode. Not just to talk about some of your policies and positions, but definitely to talk about your story about running. That's, that's definitely quite a story.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he, he was, I mean, he, it was, it was a loss for the district because he was a, he was a phenomenal teacher. Um, unfortunately, my two older boys didn't have him, but they knew him when they were in high school. But I, I think he's going to do great things for the state, so.
That's good. Okay, that's great. Good. Um, you know, it's, it seemed like we got a good, we had a good election this past November. You know, we got a lot of good people in some good places. So, um, not just in the White House, but of course, including the White House. Um, so, uh, the rest of the meeting seemed to go pretty smoothly. There weren't, didn't seem, really seem to be any issue, big issues or big problems. A bunch of approval of various meetings and committee hearings and meetings and stuff like that. So as there, was there anything else that kind of stuck out to you?
Hmm, oh, a couple of board members seem to be dragging their feet when it comes. Hmm, oh, a couple of board members seem to be dragging their feet when it comes to the bathroom policy, but, um,
Thank you. Yeah, that was at the beginning of the meeting, right?
Well, they, they brought, they brought up this concern at the end, um, Mr. Blacky did. Um, there, there, there seem to be certain board members that, well, they, oh, hang on, I gotta plug my, my phone in my battery thing just came on. So, yeah, that, that seemed to be like trying to drag this out.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, so it was, um,
This Northern?
Fuss already and, uh, last week, the, and that he just, either he wasn't paying attention or, or, well, because they were discussing the two, you know, what the, uh, the, the two law firms stance was on, um, on the executive order. And here's the thing about the solicitor. Um, I'm not going to go into detail, but, uh, about who are the particular solicitor is, but if you talk to Mariana, she could tell you. Um, and I think saying that, you know exactly who I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah, actually I did not realize that that connection existed, but now that I know that. Also, one of the, so there's two law firms that, that they're looking at for what, to draft language?
Oh, here's, our, our solicitor was Stock and Leader and it was the exact same one that Mariana knows.
Gotcha, gotcha. That's, yep. All right, nope, it's all clicking together. Yeah, it's all clicking together now. Okay.
Oh, we also brought in I L C, um, which is an independent law firm. They, and yes, they lean conservative. They're a Christian conservative law firm. Um, we brought them in, um, a little over a year ago. Um, and, uh, so obviously you have a very conservative leading law firm and a very
Yeah.
Leading law firm.
The opposite, yeah.
Yes. Now, when Biden wrote the executive order was trying to change Title IX, I L C is like, well, it's an executive order. You gotta go, you, you, you have to follow the executive. Now, different executive order, like, well, that's, hold on and see what's going to happen in the.
So, gotcha. Okay. So even though the one law firm was, even though they didn't like it, we're still, well, it's still law. That's, you still have to follow it. But the other law firm is saying, oh no, hold on.
Yeah, yeah. And the thing is, when we did have the executive order from, from Biden, even I L C is like, well, let's hold off and see what's going to happen after the election because this could go into legislation. But yeah, so it's, so both, I L C has said you have to follow both executive orders, whereas Stock and Leader is only like, well, you have to follow Biden's executive order, but Trump's, let's wait and see what's going to happen. So.
Yeah, because of, yes, because of what their law firm is. It's all about what's in the law firm. Um, if I L C doesn't have things like that written in their, uh, you know, written in their bylaws and stuff, then, you know, they can be more honest about things. Whether they like it or not, you still have to follow it. This, that's just the way it is.
Yeah.
Uh, make sure you look into the law firms that you're using because not every law firm has that, like, certain lawyers have to follow or give certain advice or specific advice because it says so in their, in their charter. And if they're, and if they're a partner, then they have no choice. They could lose their ownership of the, in the law firm, their, 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 uh, partnership. They could lose it all if they don't follow the mandate from the actual law firm. So keep that in mind when you're out there looking for a lawyer.
Yeah. And the thing is, it's like, you know, they, like, well, we need a little bit of direction. What's, you know, what do? I mean, you look at what's going on with Maine. They're, they're losing funding because they're, they're fighting back against the executive order. And I understand that an executive order, a new president can come in and change it. It's got to go through legislation. But the fact is, when there is an executive order, you, you, you know, you can't.
You just have to do it. Yeah, there's only so much time where you can, where you can look at how to reword it or how to write it or whatever. At some point you have to do it and, and implement it. That's, and that's pretty much where we're, where we're at now. He's been president for four months. He, 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 uh, initiated this executive order very early.
Yes.
In his presidency. So, I mean, I'd say, yeah, it's, if it's, if you, if there are schools out there that don't have it implemented by the 20, the beginning of the 2026, 27 school year, you're likely going to face legal issues.
Yeah.
At the very least, if not before that, because really it should be before that. There's a whole summer of sports seasons coming up. But, you know, I would say, I would say at the very least, if you don't have it by the beginning of the school year, you're gonna face some kind of repercussions or loss of funding.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, schools are in trouble. A lot of schools are in trouble right now. They're in the hole. You know, they, they have negative budgets. If you, you know, you lose that federal funding even for a couple of weeks, that could just be the end.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah. So.
Well.
Oh, I mean, but these are particular board members that have tried to drag this out in the past, so it's not surprising.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and, uh, but Mr. Halakki is not rerunning. His term is up at the end of this year, so he's not rerunning. So we're going to have a new board member replace him come January.
Okay. And hey, if there's anybody out there who is running for the school board on either side, I don't care what side you're on. If you, you can come on the show and, you know, let me showcase, you know, where your position is and where you stand on stuff. And, you know, if you can stand up to the crossfire, we're conservative or liberal, you know what I mean? It doesn't matter. If you're a conservative, I'm going to play the opposite side and provide pushback on your positions. If you're the liberal, I'm going to play the conservative. I'm going to push back on your positions. That's what we do here on the Boiling Point Podcast where it's not a sugar coat. So, uh, come on, I'd be happy to help, uh, you know, give you a platform to talk about your positions and stuff. So definitely reach out. Uh, oh, and in case you need to know how to reach ahold, get ahold of me, that would be J D Boiling Point at gmail dot com. You can send me an email and of course, we're on Facebook, YouTube and Rumble and I'm on Twitter as well. So look at, for all the, all the information is in the description of this video. Um, Julia, is there anything else we want to talk about then before we close this out?
Um, no, no. The, the middle school discussion, it actually didn't take as long as I thought it was. When I saw the middle school on there, I was expecting hours again. So this was actually.
I was, I thought eight o'clock. Actually, what's funny is I looked at the agenda and I'm like, okay, this is going to go to at least eight probably. And I can't believe I was right. I can't believe how close I was. But because at quarter of or 20 of eight, I was like, no. I was like, they got at least and probably another 45 minutes or 50 minutes, you know what I mean? And then right after eight, they closed out and I'm like, I jumped up quick. I'm like, okay, you're ready. Uh, that's what I did. I apologized to everybody when I got on camera. I'm like, sometimes these meetings end just very abruptly. It's just like, oh, and we're done. Click. And I'm like, okay. Uh, sit up and get the camera on. Well, not the camera tonight. Um, all right. So, um, yeah, that's the last meeting for this month, right?
Yeah.
Until May now.
Yeah. And like I said, until they get, until they get a new architect, um, there really isn't too much to discuss other than the repairs that need to be done with the middle school. So, but the renovation, the next step is to get a new architect. And they, they think that they may have, from what they're saying, because they, they want, um, they, they want Mr. Youngs to put the, um, I, I think RFP out quickly so that way we can get this ball rolling by June.
Okay. Well, that's, yeah, that's pretty quick.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Um, all right. Well, that's good news. And, um, I, we are working on stuff to help Northern, to help Julia and the other parents, uh, give, get, give you, the viewers, more information. Uh, so stay tuned to us for that. Um, we have a lot of things that we want to make the, the, the meetings and stuff, uh, changes and stuff to make the meetings easier to follow along. Um, and easier to understand who's speaking, but these will take time to implement. So just bear with us and, eh, you know, you'll see these changes happen slowly throughout the, the rest of the spring and summer months here. Um, Julia, thank you for being our, uh, our senior Northern York School District correspondent.
Yeah.
Um, uh, and it's great. I'm glad that we're doing two schools now. So if you have a school and you'd like us to get involved, reach out. And, um, but I guess that's where we're going to end this. Um, we might have an episode maybe with, uh, Julia and some of the other parents between this meeting and the next meeting. Um, we'll see what happens. Like I said, we're, I'm really focused on trying to implement some of the changes to make the meetings a little easier to follow. So that's what I want to focus on for May and, and make those May meetings a little easier to follow. So you may not see Julia again or any of the other Northern parents until May, when we do the school board. But, you know, don't worry, they haven't gone anywhere. There's just helping me work behind the scenes, which is where I am when I'm not on camera. Um, make sure you check out, I'm going to plug some stuff now for the parents. I'm sorry, but you know, we still have, we have bills to pay too. So, and shout-outs to give. Marcus Frederiksen is who we have. As we, as you've seen, we, when we first do, started doing these, we didn't really do music. We just started the meeting. Um, but Marcus Frederiksen, he does the music for all of our credits, all of our opening and closing. Go check out his channel at reverb nation dot com slash Marcus Frederiksen. And of course, you can support us at bonfire dot com slash store slash the Boiling Point Podcast. We have lots of different apparel. Please go and pick up something and, uh, support us, support some of our gear. And of course, hit that like button, hit the reaction button, subscribe, comment. All of that stuff helps us reach more people. So if you could do that also, that would be great. Until next time, for Julia, I am your host, J D. And that's the end.
All right. Have a good night.